Good evening and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome. Busy night, so we're gonna get going right away. At least we call roll, please.
Here.
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 Mayor Winchell.
Here. Councilmember Gra is out tonight and will not be joining us, so. All right, with that, we will move on to adopting the agenda, the corrections or additions to the agenda. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve agenda?
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post him sign. Carries. Moves this to proclamation. I have a proclamation tonight for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Are there any folks here with us? Come on up. Come on up to the, just. State your name and address, please, for our records.
My name is Katie Shawman. My address is one one eight five Farmers Lane, Belle Plain, Minnesota, five six zero one one. And I'm from Southern Valley Alliance, the domestic abuse provider for Carver and Scott Counties.
And, and looking through the proclamation here, I see that your calls for help have really increased over the last years and, and I guess, I mean, and seeing that it's increased nationwide, I just, there was just something on the, on the news about that again tonight. The protest on at the Ca- Capitol, was it, I think? So. But anyways, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so we have a proclamation. Whereas the city of Chaska, in recognition of the critical work being done by the domestic violence advocates in service of the survivors and victims they serve, I encourage all citizens to actively engage in the work and events sponsored by Southern Valley Alliance and other organizations working toward the elimination of domestic violence. And whereas more than ten million adults experience domestic violence and over one point five million high school students are physically abused by dating partners annually in the United States. And whereas there are more than twenty-three thousand calls are placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide every day. And whereas calls to our local domestic abuse crisis line, Southern Valley Alliance, have more than doubled in the last two years. And whereas the impact of the domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but communities and a nation as a whole. And whereas Chaska joins with other, others across the state of Minnesota and nationwide in supporting domestic violence victim and survivors, the advocates and the organizations who serve them and holding offenders. Therefore, be it resolved that I mark wind shuttle, the mayor of the city of Chaska, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Chaska, do hereby procl- proclaim October two thousand and twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In witness whereof, I hereon do set my hand in the seal of the city of Chaska on the sixteenth day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three. Read this proclamation. That's for, that's for you and you have, if you wanna, if you've got anything more you'd like to talk about, feel free.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You wanna, oh.
To take a picture with, all right, Kevin's got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm just briefly wanna thank you all so much for your continued support and give you a quick update. I know last year when I was here, I shared a little bit about our new domestic abuse advocacy center that we're building in downtown Shakopee, and we are weeks away from it being complete, which is super exciting. We are planning to be moving into that new space before the holiday season and hopes to open our front doors to all those in need by the first of the year. So really excited that you've been able to be on this journey with us. We do have plans of having the entire community come and see the new space, so be on the lookout for that invitation because we'd love for you all to come and see it. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Enjoying it.
Thank you. Next, we, under visitor presentation, we have Senator Coleman is here to join us and we'd just like to congratulate her for all of her help that she's done for us and advocating for our City Square West project that we're actively working on. We had the bonding tour here last week. Last week, we had the bonding tour here, so that was kind of exciting. That makes it seem like that and so all the help that, that you can give us, we would certainly appreciate so. But I know you've done a lot of other things, so I'm gonna give you this opportunity to have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for inviting me this evening. It was a surprisingly productive year on my end. When we lost the majority in the Senate, I thought, well, I'm not gonna get so much of the bill hearing done for four years and was happy to bring tens of millions of dollars back to the district, pass some meaningful legislation and am really happy to see this project that you and I have met so many times to discuss start to get some initial funding. It's great because once you start to get funding in the bonding process, the Senate and the House, they don't like to see that money just fade away. That means you're in the queue. That means more money's likely coming down the pipeline and that'll certainly be one of the top projects I'll be advocating for in the bonding year coming up. I'm trying to think on the committees I sit on, so I sit on the Education Policy Committee, and we pushed very hard to make sure that literacy and phonics was our top priority, and we saw a lot of headway made in that regard this year. We should see some of those policies implemented later on, and hopefully we can start to tackle the really, really bad literacy rates that we have in Minnesota. I serve on transportation. As you know, we got twenty million dollars for Highway Five. We got several million dollars for eighteen eighty-second Street. And then as far as the bonding project goes, we brought funding back for your project. I got some for the clone wastewater treatment plant. And there's a long list of projects that I have, Carver County, because we are the fastest growing county in the state. There's a lot of infrastructure needs to keep up with the growth, so there's quite a bit of a demand on my schedule for bonding this year, but because your project is taking off so well, it's going to continue to be in the top queue of mine, so I look forward to working with you all and as much as I appreciate the recognition, it's you, Mr. Mayor, reaching out and getting together and making sure to stay at the top of my, my radar here, so your tireless advocacy for the city does not go unnoticed.
Thank you for that. I, I have, are you, you have, you got more, are you good?
I'm one of the shortest-winded members of the Senate.
Thanks for you. I have a certificate of special recognition. For your willingness and preservation and assistance in the city of Chaska and getting the City Square West project and the bonding bill during the legislative session, so we want to give you that. But more importantly, we want to give you the coveted brick. That is, when you get one of those, you know you're on the top of the list.
All right, I love it.
So that's for you and hopefully you display it proudly in your office and.
Absolutely will.
Awesome. Well, thank you for being here. We gotta do a photo op. What's Kevin?
Absolutely.
I just had a quick question.
Yeah.
So Senator, with the bonding tour that came here, does the Senate have a bonding tour and like, will you advocate for City Square West to be on that?
So right now, the Senate bonding tour has gone through the top projects posted through MMB. They said if there's time at the end of the year, they'll be going through each senator's individual top request, and I did make this my number one request for the visit, so you all get updated. They're running really behind schedule. Usually they're done by November. Right now, they're scheduling out to January. We'll see what they can squeeze in before February twelfth, when we get it in.
Yeah, we had heard that it probably be January if we got, if we got a Senate.
Yeah, so bring your boots.
A little cooler out.
I got a picture of you guys.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic. I can both here.
Oh.
You don't have the brick upside down, do you?
I don't.
One, two, three. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. We'll talk to you soon.
Yeah, thank you so much. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here else here under visitor presentation? Not hearing anyone. All right, so we will move on to approving previous meeting minutes, and that is from the city council meeting on ten two of twenty-three. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post him sign. Moves this to consent item. These are all items that need our approval, but not necessary conversations, but any and all can be pulled off at any time for discussion. With that, is there anyone that has any comments, concerns, or questions regarding consent?
I had one comment, but hold on, because I can't remember. It was. Oh, I was happy to see eight, see the Ernst House.
What?
The Ernst House on there. I was happy to see that. That was a long journey, I know.
That's been a long journey.
I just was happy to see that.
We're still working.
Anyone else?
Good news with that is the contractor is working on it. It's coming in tomorrow to meet with the billing inspector, so hopefully that means good news.
That means good news, yeah, generally, generally, so. All right, anyone else?
Motion to approve consent.
The motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong to approve consent. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post him sign. Motion carries. All right, moved that. Nine action items. This is a public hearing to consider resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash eighty-two approving the city's application to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development on behalf of, is it Jabil? Is that how you say it?
Jabil.
Jabil? Inc. and, and Minnesota Investment Program.
Mayor, Councilmember, first of all, I wasn't here at the last meeting, neither were you, so I'm not sure if Julie got introduced or not.
I, I have that on my list too, but go ahead. Do go ahead.
Julie Grove is our new economic development coordinator. She comes to us from the city of St. Louis Park. Oh, are you gonna do that?
No, we already did this.
Oh, well, the mayor never heard.
You two, you two weren't here, so.
Julie Grove is our economic development coordinator, so.
So Matt and I welcome you to.
Yeah, we welcome. Yes, that's right. The item in front of you tonight, Julie, is gonna go over, but basically it's a program we've used in the past to help with expansion of businesses in the community. It's an assistance program through the state that we basically act as a conduit to help make happen. So I'll turn it over to Julie to introduce what it is and talk about what Jabil is talking about doing.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Staff received a request from Jabil for the city to sponsor an application to DED, the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, for a MIF, a Minnesota Investment Fund Forgivable Loan. As part of the application process, the city is required to hold a public hearing and then adopt a resolution approving the application's middle. Jabil is a manufacturing company that's located here in the city's North Industrial Park. They are a global manufacturing services company that offers design, production, and product management services. They received a MIF loan with the city's assistance back in two thousand and seventeen to help them establish their presence here in Chaska, and the loan was successful and provided job growth, and it has since closed. Jabil is now looking to expand. They will stay in their current location, but are looking to lease additional space in Chaska's, the Chaska Creek Business Park, which is in the, one of the Opitons new buildings down on the west side of the city. The new space would allow for the expansion of their polymer extrusion manufacturing, I don't know if I said that right. Capabilities. As part of the expansion, Jabil is anticipating a capital investment of approximately five million and then up to ten jobs within the next few years. The MIF assistance, the, the loan assistance is needed to help with this expansion. Staff is currently working with Jabil and with DED on the application. The amount of the MIF loan will be determined by DED once the application is actually submitted. The public hearing notice was published a few weeks ago, and we have not received any comments. Representatives, I should say, from Jabil are here and they may wish to say a few words tonight. Staff is recommending holding the public hearing and then adopting the resolution that's in front of you. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them or turn it over to Jabil's representatives.
I didn't, I, I think I, if I read it right, I didn't quite hear you. They're gonna go into some of the Opitons buildings?
Correct.
Okay, the, the back one then? But the Creek Road. One on Creek Road.
Yes, I believe so.
And how much of that building is it that, are they taking?
Um, they are taking and maybe they can answer this approximately thirty-one thousand square feet.
And this is, so we're just going through the process and then D determines.
D will determine the amount and it will be a loan that will come to us and we will provide the funds to D.
Pass.
Your, to Jabil, yes, we're basically a pastor.
I saw, apparently you guys are, so if you wanna come up and, and just say something, you don't have to, but you're certainly more than willing to.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just need a name and address, if you would, for our records.
Uh, my name's Willa Torrance, and I live at four seven one seven Island View Drive in Mount.
My name is Nathan Pyer. I live at nine forty-four Ivy Hills Road, Belle Plain, Minnesota. So I'm the, one of the business managers for Jabil, so council and mayor, we wanted to thank you for your previous support with the investment that Jabil's made in the Chaska area and also continued support as we look at expanding.
Yeah, we've, we've enjoyed working in the community and I personally lived in the community and, and so Chaska is a great place to grow business, so.
How, how soon are you moving in? You're not in that building yet.
Quickly. Um, yeah, we're under lease negotiations right now.
That's exciting. I mean, we're always happy to see businesses expand and, and we're fortunate that we have somewhere for people to expand, but we did have a problem with that for a while, but we're, we're in pretty good shape now and got some, a lot of things in process that somebody needed more space, we can come up with more, so we're very fortunate at this point to be able to do that and have that available, so. Very exciting for us as a city to see that happen and so very excited, so thank you for being here and thank you for choosing to stay here, so.
Thanks for your support.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else got any questions, comments? So if I hear nothing, so I'm gonna go ahead at seven seventeen, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and see if there's anyone that wants to speak regarding the DED program with Jabil, Jabil. Anyone? Right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven seventeen. At this point, council thoughts? Motion's?
Uh, that you guys are, you know, gonna be, you know, expanding here in Chaska, so thank you very much for, you know, for investing, continuing to invest in our community. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-three eighty-two approving C's application for Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development on behalf of Jabil.
All right, so a motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Hatfield, adopting resolution two thousand and twenty-three approving the city's application to DED on behalf of Jabil. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post him sign. Thank you. Good luck with that. All right, moves this to nine B, adopting resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash eighty-three approving the CUP for the berm on the Kelsar site, Cloud HQ.
Mayor, councilmember, this item is coming from the planning commission. If you remember back in August of two thousand and twenty-two, we did do a concept plan for Cloud HQ, which is proposing a one point five million square foot data center on about seventy-two acres on the Kelsar property. As part of that, like around United Health Group and that side of, of the West Creek Development, there is an existing berm that's there to help protect view sheds from the neighborhoods that are to the east. Same token that, that wraps around on the north side of the site and, and helps protect view sheds from neighbors that are in the Clover Ridge neighborhood to the north. So tonight, Cloud HQ is coming to make a request for a conditional use permit to actually start construction on that berm, as it is a pretty lengthy process to actually go and actually complete that, that process, so I'll turn it over to Liz, who's gonna present this item.
Matt, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We have a conditional use permit request this evening for the Kelsar site being proposed by Cloud HQ, and this is specifically for the construction of the berm on the Kelsar site. So to just give you a snapshot of our process and kind of how this fits into the overall three-step process that we typically go through, so we did approve a concept plan back in August of two thousand and twenty-two. The applicant isn't ready to move forward with a preliminary plan quite yet, so they are pursuing a conditional use permit to construct the berm. If they were to get the preliminary approval, they wouldn't have to go through the CUP process because grading allowance would occur after that preliminary approval, so this is kind of that in-between step, just based on the scale of the dirt that's being brought in, and so again, they're pursuing this ahead of their preliminary site and building plan and pre-plat for the site. So the site is highlighted above. It's located directly off of West Creek Lane and Angler Boulevard to the south. There's a couple data centers that exist out there today. The Clover Ridge Development abuts the east and north sides of the Kelsar property and then additional rural residential sites directly west. So the site got approvals back in two thousand and seventeen, and this was for a different project at that time, but I just wanted to note this as the rezoning occurred during, during the two thousand and seventeen approvals, which was to a planned industrial district, PID seven to be exact, that plan during two thousand and seventeen did not move on to final approvals. And so in August of two thousand and twenty-two, we saw a new concept plan come forward from the Cloud HQ group, and this was for the one point five million square foot data center that is also connected with this plan being proposed this evening. A part of that two thousand and twenty-two approval, it showed the installation of a thirty-foot berm on the north and east sides that would encompass the, the buffer area that's been defined in the comprehensive plan. The applicant did conduct a neighborhood meeting for this specific request on September twenty-eighth of this year. They did have a couple residents show up to that meeting and have comments and questions related to a number of topics, but specifically to noise, the timing of construction, how long the berm was gonna take to complete, utility connections, seating, and dust control. And those meeting minutes were attached with your packet. This is the two thousand and twenty-two concept plan, if we need to refer back, but this just shows the one point five million square foot data center and kind of how it was generally laid out on the site and then where the berm was shown, both on the north and east sides here.
Where's that, where's that utility tower?
The transmission.
There.
Where?
Right where that.
Here, it's kind of grayed out, kind of on the southern side.
On the south side of the building.
Oh, I thought that was right out in the middle of that field.
Not entirely, so there is space there for that.
Is that, am I seeing it, is it two buildings?
Here, they're showing one building in this concept here. So in, in terms of the comprehensive plans, guidance, and the zoning for the site, like I mentioned, it's zone PID seven today. The comprehensive plan guides this area to the open space and business park part of that plan, so the open space area showed the inclusion of that three hundred foot buffer in between the business park area and the residential to the north and to the east, and like Matt mentioned, there's a portion of that berm already constructed today on the east side. And so what they're requesting again is to start construction mainly on the, the north side of the site here. So that's why they're pursuing a CUP, which would also be consistent with the comprehensive plan's guidance for the site and what was shown in two thousand and twenty-two for that concept plan. So again, the CUP is for the construction of the berm. They're specifically pursuing just the north side of the berm up to a certain amount or up to a certain limitation, which is the west side of the existing driveway on the site, so they'll be pursuing that with this CUP and then they'll come back for the east side of the site for the birmingham when they get preliminary approvals and final approvals on the site. So specifically, they're asking to mine or, I'm sorry, bring in fill for up to three hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards to help construct a portion of the berm, so because they're in excess of two thousand cubic yards for the site, a CUP is required for that. Just a couple details of the operation itself, so again, I mentioned three hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards are being brought into the site to help start construction on the north side of the berm, and they'll be constructing that up to the west edge of the existing driveway that accesses the residence at two thousand and seven Schoolmaster Drive, so that's the home that's in, situated in the middle of the, the site, and I'll actually go back to the aerial here. This is two thousand and seven Schoolmaster Drive. They have access on to Schoolmaster through the Clover Ridge Development, so.
So where are they gonna start the birmingham from, from the?
So they're based.
To go west or west to go east?
So they're kind of working their way in, but they're basically pursuing the berm all along the north side up to this west edge here.
Okay, and all, all the vehicles come off of Angler, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
That's how they're gonna come in and do, okay.
All right, so the, the home here will stay intact during all.
Will stay intact?
Yep, they are planning to keep that and still rent it out to the folks that are living there. So the birmingham on the east side of the driveway and what will complete out the site. So the birmingham on the east side of the driveway and what will complete out the site will be done once final approvals are done for the building and the overall site itself. So they will still have to come back for preliminary and final approvals with the city to be able to construct the site and the building for the data center that they're proposing. The berm for what they're constructing will be approximately thirty feet tall with three to one slopes on either side. So again, that's consistent with what was laid out in those two thousand twenty-two approvals. They will also be installing storm sewer pipes alongside the berm to be able to capture drainage that comes off the berm and directed away from the residential lots. With the amount of dirt that's being proposed, there is an anticipation of roughly seventeen thousand five hundred trucks that are gonna be needed to bring in that amount of dirt. And then the length of how long this will occur for, they do anticipate it might take up to a year to be able to bring in that amount of dirt, but that's very dependent on dirt being available from various construction sites. So it could take a little bit less, but it could also take a little bit more than a year. So that's why we say a year loosely, just based on the dependency of what's available. This is the plan showing the birmingham on the north side. I do wanna note that this plan has been updated since Planning Commission in in response to some of the comments that were received out of Planning Commission. But the the birmingham again is shown up to kind of the north west edge of the site and then up to that almost east side, or I'm sorry, west side of the driveway that accesses the the residence on the site. So a couple things that have changed since the Planning Commission, just in response to some of the comments received is they did modify this area of their grading plan to show the berm and sloping to go all the way to the the limits of that corner against the residential properties. We heard from one resident that abuts this corner of of the area who had concerns about making sure that that berm was being brought to its ultimate limit so that the screening and the view shed was being addressed in the best way possible. So they have made that modification there on that north side. And then in addition, they did modify the haul route to show a loop back on to West Creek Lane here. So that was a comment that staff brought up, just to ensure that trucks that are coming into the site will have a continuous movement through the site and aren't stubbing off on the north side and backing up and turning around. So this will hopefully minimize the amount of backups that need to occur on site. In fact, it should try to minimize most of it, just due to the direction of traffic there.
They, they have some lines on on dirt right now that they can start? I mean, do they have, they have some places that, okay?
I understand they do. I'd refer that question back to them, just to speak to the specifics on that, because I know it comes and goes in very short ways.
I know how that can be, but, you know, we've had a lot going on here, but now we're kinda starting to slow down again on on some of that dirt hauling, but. Okay.
Just wanted to show a couple rendering views that were done during the concept plan approval, just to show kind of that big picture of what the end product would look like. And this is when plantings and trees and and that sort of thing are all completed on the berm and what that view shed would look like for a couple of the sections between the east side and the north side. So this image here shows a section between the east homes and the berm and the data center that was shown during the concept plan. And then this is a section on the north side between the homes, the thirty-foot berm, and then the data center as well. And then another section cut on the north side, more on the northwest side, between kind of that second layer of homes off of Sagewood and what they would see from their backyards. And this is, again, mature, mature installation here. So after the trees have had some time to grow in, this is basically what would be seen. So getting into this CUP requirements, there's a list of six standards that need to be met for CUP. I'm only gonna touch on a few of these, B and D. So with standard B, the special use will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted nor substantially diminishing impair property values within the neighborhood. So they are gonna be bringing in clean and compactable fill that will be tested regularly by an engineering firm. The installation of the berm will complete a project that has been anticipated for a number of years, both from the comprehensive plan side of things, but also what previous approvals have shown on the site. So it will be that significant buffer and screen for the residential to the north and to the east in terms of what they're gonna see as development occurs on this site. So again, the berm meets those previous approvals and what's been anticipated out here. And then related to item D or standard D, adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and necessary facilities have been or will be provided. So all the traffic will be coming from West Creek Lane from Angler Boulevard via gravel haul route. Again, they've already made a modification to include a looping direction on there so that it minimizes to the best ability possible the backups of trucks on sites on the site. They'll also be doing a significant erosion control on the site to be able to stabilize the dirt of the berm when it continues to get stacked up. So they'll have erosion fabric as well as seating on top of the berm once it meets its final height. And they'll also be installing two-foot swales on the north side of the berm plus storm sewer pipes. A couple of those to be able to bring the drainage away from the residential properties from the north. So that would control all of the the runoff that's coming from the berm itself. They will also be practicing normal dust control methods on the haul route and on the berm itself to ensure that there's not an issue there. And then they will also put in some drainage systems to help capture the water on site coming off the berm. Just wanted to note with the Planning Commission approval or recommendation that came last Wednesday, they did recommend approval of the conditional use permit and then added two additional conditions to the approval, one being that the performance security that is taken from the applicant also includes sufficient funds to accommodate plantings on the berm. And then secondly, also wanted to have an interim landscape plan completed and approved by the city to look at planting trees on top of the berm as the berm is getting completed. So it's not just a berm with grass on it and that the applicant is starting to look at putting some plantings on top of it to just help establish some of the growth there. So that was an additional condition that was provided. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion this evening to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eighty-three, which is approving the conditional use permit for the installation of the berm on the Kelzer property and then subject to the conditions that are listed within that resolution. We do have people in the audience with Cloud HQ and Kim Lee Horn to help answer any questions related to the project. Otherwise, I'm happy to help answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Questions? But this again is pretty exciting. This is a huge undertaking. That tells me that things are probably moving forward to get that facility built. And it sounds like we have some assurances that something fell through that we'd be able to have this berm taken care of and and all that. So that's, I guess that's a good thing. That was a question I had, but you just cleared that up now, so.
That would be in form of performance bond.
Right, right.
Yep.
I mean, so getting this done, that really opens up for them just to come forward with a preliminary then. I mean, fairly quickly if if they're, if they land wherever they're trying to land.
I mean, I think one of the things that it does is that reduces the amount of time. To me, it does two things. It reduces the amount of time to actually go out and get the site ready for them to actually put the building there. I think maybe secondly, you know, an important thing that it does is that puts the you could imagine if the building was going up and the neighbors are watching everything develop, this provides them some screening while the actual development is occurring, you know, while the building's going up, especially if there's some trees they're putting on there. You can get head start on some of the trees to get established, be able to grow up, be able to provide some screening. So to me, it's it's, you know, hopefully a benefit to get the development moving forward, but it's definitely a benefit for the neighbors to be able to get that birmingham prior to when a building is actually going up.
And this is a requirement that we, you know, established in the most recent concept plan, but also you might recall there have been plans that have come forward on this site before. And the idea of this berm, the screening berm and the buffer width and all of that has been part of that as well. In addition to it being described in the comprehensive plan. So, you know, the the effort that Cloud HQ is pursuing here is something that needs to happen on the site, regardless of who develops, you know, at the end of the day. Now, I hope it's Cloud HQ, right? And we're all wanting to work with them and continue moving forward. But in any case, you know, this this birmingham is a step forward on the developability of the site itself.
So it's, this is a huge step forward. I mean, this gives, seems like it gives us a little more assurance that something's gonna happen. I mean, I know anything can change, but I think that this is, this tells me a lot.
Yeah, I mean, some of the numbers of this thing, it's kind of hard to wrap that around this the scale, just the berm itself, much less the building.
Wow, three hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of dirt, a lot of dirt. A lot of dirt.
So how come, so maybe I missed it. Why were we not, why is the berm not being built on the east side? It's just on the north side. There is a little bit of birmingham that exists on the east side already today. Part of it is that there's the access road that exists there right now to get to the home. And so that access road will continue to exist until the point that Cloud HQ is actually ready to go forward and build a building. They want to keep that home there rather than have a vacant home, you know, just from a safety perspective, among other things. And so in order to build a berm on the east side, you'd start disrupting that access road and the ability for, you know, folks to get in there. So there's a little, there is some birmingham that's already existing there. There will be additional birmingham that occurs at the time that Cloud HQ moves forward with their project. But it, just with some of those factors involved, it just isn't quite the right point to.
Well, that's, it's, it's an income property for the Kelzers. And so I'm sure until, you know, things are finalized and going forward, they want to be able to keep that.
Like I said, we all know things happen. Yeah, and I I think if they get this larger part of the berm done, the remaining part's probably not that big of a project then.
Yeah, and you know, the, part of what was discussed at the concept even was the idea that, you know, we'd want to have them pursue the berm, you know, before they really start digging into the building to establish that screening like we're talking about. And so, you know, that'll still be part of that, you know, project plan as it proceeds on the east side. So you wanna make sure that the neighbors on the east side are are being acknowledged and, you know, similar way to the folks on the north. Now, like I said before, there there is some birmingham screening that already exists on the east side. And so, you know, it seems reasonable, right, that the folks in the north are getting a jumpstart, so to speak, or maybe they're getting caught up. Maybe that's the way to look at it, but, you know.
And and did I read that right, that they'll bring the sewer in to get it under the berm before the berm comes?
Correct, yep. So they'll they'll make that extension just to stub it off on the, would be the south side of the berm there, because once you get the berm there, obviously, it's gonna be hard to, you know, or maybe even near impossible, right?
Does that come in where the private driveway is? Is that where that would come in or is there a different spot?
It's west of there.
Yeah.
There's another outlet, west.
Oh, okay.
So there's a, that's a Jonathan Lot Outlet right now, and there's the mailbox station there, is there? Yeah.
They'll be able, so they gotta go all the way to the street or is that stubbed out somewhere?
It's stubbed into the outlet right now.
So.
Yep, yep, because I mean, this was the the planned location for that sewer connection to happen at the time of the neighborhood being developed, so.
That, that should be a simple process then.
Pretty. As simple as a sewer extension can be, yeah.
Water main, just to clarify.
Or water main, yeah, sorry.
I thought, I thought, if I read that, I thought the water was coming the other way. I I mean, it doesn't matter, but I I thought I read that they just had to get the sewer in there, the water, I just assumed was coming off that, whatever the name of that road is. Okay. Well, like I said, I think it's exciting. We've talked about this building for quite a while and and, you know, keep everything is another step forward. So, and I think this is a couple steps here. So at what point do we have to start doing our electrical work? I mean, that's no.
Well, first of all, first of all, it wouldn't be us doing the electrical work because it'd be MMPA that would be doing it. And we're currently in discussions with them about that now. You know, we've provided to them or MMPA has provided to them how much timing it would take to get something in place. So there's really sort of two phases of electrical that would come. One would be getting a trans, we have a second spot for a transformer in West Creek Substation that would offer sort of the first amount of power. And then there's a site that we're working with that they own that would put sort of the rest of the transformers. Now, those are step-down transformers. There's another whole set of where the big transmission lines come in that that come down that we're working on too. That could be XL that ends up doing that. And then we end up doing the step-down transformation, so.
Do we still have to buy land for that? Do we have to build a second substation like we kind of had heard at one point?
So.
Not necessarily.
So it depends on if XL does it or not. So what was being talked about before is is would be if or MMPA did everything. Now they're having some discussion about potentially having XL do the big transformation and then that we would do our step-down transformation on a piece of property that they have that's close to our substation. So that that's something that's.
They, this site?
This site, yep. So that's something that's still being discussed.
I know, we had talked about it at one point, we had to maybe buy some land for this.
Yeah, that's, well, it's still up in the air.
But I mean.
It really depends on who does the the large side tran- transformation from the transmission line.
And for anyone that's met throughout MMPA, that's the company that we're part of a co-op that, that's where our power comes from. So MMPA is ultimately where where our power comes from. So if you're wondering what those initials mean. So, okay, because I I just, you know, I know that stuff all takes time and getting the big transformers and the stuff that we need for that. And all of a sudden, you know, tomorrow they come and say, we're building. Get us some power. I just, that's what I was wondering about.
Now, that's, that's, I mean, part of the timing is all gonna be to, you know, determined on getting that agreement together on the electrical side too. Part of the timing is all going to be to, you know, determined on getting that agreement together on the electrical side too. Because that's, yeah.
You just heard that with Roseville just went through that big thing, Roseville or Rosemont. About about the large data center that's going in there and. So.
It's it's something I'd say every couple of weeks we're in discussions with, talking about that.
Alright, it's awesome. Awesome. Anyone else? Sorry, I've been kind of yapping.
You guys had a question about where the dirt was going to come from. You can probably answer that.
You come on up? Sure. Just name an address again.
Good evening, Mayor Council members. I'm Trish C. with Kimley Horn. Address is seven sixty seven East Street in St. Paul. So I'm the civil engineer that's working on behalf of Cloud HQ. And the dirt is, it's kind of, it's not one source, but there are a lot of active construction sites. You're right, that we're kind of getting to the end of the year, but. We're doing this, you know, really for two reasons is to build the berm prior to the building, like was always part of the commitment. But then secondly, there is some availability. Of some dirt that we can take advantage of right now. It's a very expensive berm overall, and if we can get some excess dirt that construction sites have, it just makes that a little bit more economical. So it's coming from a lot of sources. And honestly, some of it is going to come down to timing between. The CUP process and then and then finishing up the permits as well. And then what exactly what's active with the varying construction sites around this part of the metro area. So they've got an earthwork contractor that's working to identify all those and secure it if it the timing's right.
There's clearly a lot of stuff still going on around here.
Second phase two twelve.
And and they have that. Yeah, that's next year, right?
And that that'd be right down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that's a short haul. That's probably fifteen miles maybe at the. Alongside. So.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Also have any questions?
No, just comments. It's like, you know, normally. Before my days in the planning commission, you know, it was really, really challenging to get people to build berms because it's so much easier and more space efficient just to build a wall or build a fence or something like that. Or just plant a bunch of trees because, you know, berms take more space. It costs more build of just, you know, it's because people, real estate's expensive, right? So to see someone come in and say, hey, I'm gonna build like this. You know, thirty foot tall berm, that's a big deal. And it says, that's a says a lot about the investment that you're willing to make. Especially with the neighbors too, because from the neighbor's perspective, it's a lot more appealing to look at a slight hillside with trees on it. Than is to look at the back of a wall. So that says a lot about, you know, the the care and consideration for the neighbors. And that's. To me, it's really important. It's exciting to that. That this is approach being taken. So thank you very much for doing that.
Are you gonna have a lot of excess dirt off of the site? I mean, I'm sure you've looked at that at. At some point to say, you know, how many yards are you gonna have to get rid of?
And Mayor, we, at the end of the day, our goal is to have no excess dirt. So we'll bring this on and then there'll be cut fill rotation. You know, we'll have to dig out for ponds. Balance the site out. Some of where we cut for the ponds is going to go to the berm on the east side of the site to build that up. So. You know, that all the final details have to be put on it for when we come in for preliminary plans, but that's. That's the goal. That's how it's penciling out.
Alright, awesome. Thank you. Alright, anyone else? Otherwise, what's your thoughts?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty three eighty three approving the condition used for the berm in the Kelsor site.
Alright, I have a motion by Congressman Wong.
Second.
Second by Congressman Hubbard. Again, adopting resolution twenty twenty three dash eighty three approving the CUP for the berm on the Kelsor site for Cloud HQ. Discussion. Kind of covered most of the things. Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, both same side. There he is. Alright, thank you.
Thank you guys very much. This is Brett for now with Cloud HQ. Really appreciate it. Glad to be back with you guys. Thank you.
Hi Brett. From Cloud HQ. Sorry Brett, we didn't know you're on.
No worries. You guys, you guys didn't have any questions, so I was just letting you go.
I didn't know where that voice was coming from. I was really confused.
No, thank you guys very much. You're right. This is a def- definitely a good step forward for us. It's a significant investment. Lot of dirt, like you mentioned. We appreciate the feedback we got from Planning Commission. I think we have a. A more appealing plan now for the neighbors and looking forward to continuing to. Progress towards a great development with you guys. So appreciate the help.
Well, thank you for. Choosing Chaska and hopefully we can get this thing put together for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, now no more voices. Alright, here we go. Moves us in I N C. Adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash eighty four. And ordinance ten thirty seven approving the preliminary site and building. Plan preliminary plot and rezoning of thirty seven forty Chestnut. Street.
Mayor customers, this is the old treehouse site, which it's. Everybody sort of knows is the site that has the palm tree, hasn't had that for a while, but. They are looking at taking that site and turning it into smaller bay. Type of of spaces, sort of similar to what we're seeing down here by. By cousins on the old chest building, so to say. So this is preliminary plan. So I'll turn it over to Liz and she can. Go through what the recommendation from the planning commission was.
Members, we have a preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat and rezoning request for. The site known as thirty seven forty Chestnut Street is being proposed by address Asha Canus. So in terms of where we're at in the three step process, we're at the second step in the process. So it'll come back in additional. Time to get finalized out. The site is located in on the northern side of town, so directly off of Highway forty one. Or what's also known as Chestnut Street. The property is surrounded by the highway and additional. Industrial development on the south and east sides. And then we have Big Woods Lake on the west side of the property. So as Matt mentioned, this is the former treehouse. Location they used to occupy the site dating back to the early nineties and then address purchased the property. Not that long ago. So they did come forward in April of this year to get their first concept plan approved for the site. And this is when they showed the. Original one building seventeen thousand square foot concept on two point one acres. Which is being pursued for preliminary this evening. You also saw another concept plan come forward in August of this year, which included a portion. Of the tell property to the north of their property. So it's about a three point three acre site. Directly north of them that was being included in their two acre plan to have a larger. Building of the same use totaling out at thirty seven thousand square feet. However, after those approvals were completed, tell. Indicated that they were no longer interested in selling their property. Which again was three point three acres and hence why address is pursuing the original concept. That was approved in April of this year. So the site is a little over two acres in size. There's a single family home and a detached garage that. On the property. So those will both be removed with this plan. Wooded steep slopes exist on the west side that abouts the lake. And then they currently have access off of a shared access with Pondview to the south here onto Highway forty one. So. That will be maintained. With this request and be the primary access into the site. I do want to note that this access was turned to a right and right out. Recently with some recent correspondence with Mindot and. Some of the concerns that were raised from the tenants of the Pondview site as well as addresses site. Just a couple images looking into the site and out of the site from the highway, just to give some visual reference. So what they're specifically requesting this evening again is for preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat. To construct an office industrial building totaling sixteen thousand square feet in size. This will make way for roughly fifteen tenant spaces to occupy the building. Which will be approximately a thousand square feet each for each tenant. The tenants proposed here are similar to the ones that are. Going into the Chaska Tech Center that Matt mentioned earlier. So these are. Smaller incubator type businesses that are. Either working out of their homes or smaller spaces that need kind of that next step. Space to be able to grow their business or maintain their business how they need to. So these are mostly. Small production operators, manufacturing. Product distribution or people who specialize in professional services. So. Users that require any type of outdoor storage or vehicle repair or semis are not. Set up for this site. And then the. Third part of the request is they are asking for rezoning. So the property is currently zoned open, which is a holding zone until it redevelops or develops. So it will be rezoned to a planned industrial district PID eleven to be exact. So this is the site plan shown on this slide here. As I mentioned before, the access will come from the shared access onto Highway forty one. Which is a right and right out, and that will provide direct access into their site. And provide. Access to the parking and the drive aisles to access the tenant spaces. The tenant spaces will be accessed on the north and south sides of the building here. So again, this will be a sixteen thousand square foot building, only one story in height. It'll have primarily overhead doors and pedestrian doors to access each of the tenant spaces. Parking will be situated. On the south, east and west sides. Of the site to be able to accommodate the users on site. They are proposing. A total of twenty eight stalls to be constructed with the building. And then eighteen are shown as proof of parking to meet the city's parking requirement for the size of building. They do anticipate that these are on the lesser side in terms of parking. Requirements as these are kind of single user type tenants, so they don't attract a lot of. Traffic necessarily into the site. So they are very confident that twenty eight stalls will be more than sufficient to. Accommodate the use of the building and people coming to the site. As we'll be able to also park within the the tenant spaces themselves too. Stormwater will be achieved via an underground system. So there will be tanks on. Kind of four sides of the site here to be able to accommodate the drainage from the site. This is the landscape plan shown. So the trees within the wooded slope and some of the buffer area will be preserved with this plan. And then they will supplement with additional landscaping. Mainly on the east side, which is. Basically a berm. Adjacent to the highway. So that'll have a nice layer of landscaping and then some other areas of the site will also get new landscaping.
Liz, can you back up one second? What is that? What what I'm gonna call the north side, the top side of that? What is that line? It's not. That's not what, is that an island?
Um, I think it's a part of the the storm drainage system. It's not anything that's above ground or anything like that.
Say it'd make it very difficult to utilize it.
Yeah. Nope, it's all of this will be open. Drive aisle space here. This is the the building and the layout of the units. So again, these were all the separate units with their own bathroom facilities. There's one corner unit which will have kind of that lot larger square footage space, but the building itself will. Be primarily. Constructed of stone and brick, eaves, aluminum wood siding, glass, and then the overhead doors would access. The tenant spaces individually. So they do meet our industrial standards for building design and materials. Couple different changes to the building since concept, which were favorable changes. So with that, a couple motions that were requesting you to make this evening. One is to adopt. Resolution number twenty twenty three dash eighty four, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan. And preliminary plat for thirty seven forty. Chestnut Street and then based on the conditions that are listed in that resolution. And then the second motion would be to adopt ordinance number one thousand thirty seven. Approving the rezoning from open zoning district to PID eleven and then based on the ordinance. That is. Supplied this evening. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the engineering staff in the room and then addresses online. If you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Did I miss something in some, when the concept plan came in, was that? Wasn't it four tenant spaces? Or not?
I think they showed eight at that time. So they were larger.
I don't know. I had in my head there was four and then when I saw that was fifteen, I went, oh, it changed. I, it it must be. A high demand product that. We have two of them being built in our city. So. I, again, I think that's something that's exciting. It gets people that. Maybe have a business that they're running out of their house and the neighbors are getting upset because they got stuff there or whatever. And now they can. Be able to to get a facility like this and be able to. Have a home and 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 started and grow from there and then then they'll have to look for the next step, you know, so.
Yeah, I think the other thing it does that we haven't had for a long time is create incubator space for new businesses to be in. And in the past, I mean, you look at some of the businesses that establish themselves in the industrial park up north. A lot of them started as pretty small businesses and they just sort of grew within the community. So it. These are good spaces to have.
Definitely exciting. I think as a small business owner, that's like this is something you dream of is having that space. And sometimes. The scale is hard. So to just jump to, you know, a ten thousand square foot. Space would be hard, but for the, like you said, incubator spaces, it makes it a lot more achievable. So you're. Also creating a space where small businesses can come and be successful and keep growing and scale. Appropriately for what they could do. So I think this is very exciting and exciting to have two coming into town and. And both different enough that I think it's gonna. Serve everyone it'll need to well between the two. So I'm very excited to see this move forward.
Part ofly agree. Yeah, it's the thing with with this type of product being out there. For the smaller businesses grow into the great opportunity for us is to be to keep them within Chaska. So they grow to something a little bit bigger as the mayor was alluding to, and then they keep growing, you know, they'll hopefully stay within our community and add more jobs, add more. You know, more economic diversity to the to the to our area. And I think that's really exciting to be able to, you know, continue to support that, support that growth and support the the jobs that it brings. And, you know, oftentimes these are really good jobs too, because, you know, if you're working, when you work in a smaller organization, you really kind of get to see like, you know, everything start to finish and. That's to me, it's a really exciting place to be. So, you know, thank you for bringing this product to, you know, to our community.
You want to say anything? I mean, you're free to, but if you don't want to, that's okay too. You'd have to come up here though. Because it can't hear.
The person who's online might want to say something.
Or somebody online?
Yeah.
I did have a question about the changing of the from. From the initial. Eight to sixteen, just because thousand square feet isn't. It's not huge. I mean, it's not small, small, but it's not huge. And then if they're able to park inside, that also like. Kind of crunches down on the space. So what came up with the concept of like? Limiting it down.
Our engineering representing the client tonight. And I'd answer that question. Game or market demand? We're out there marketing the product. We started off with. The two thousand eight, two thousand foot square foot tenants and the feedback you're getting back is. We really don't need that space. More people are looking for something a little bit smaller. We do have the ability if we need to, if we're seeing a larger demand, they can take up two units. Expand, so.
Okay.
We have more options and more demand on this on this approach.
Okay, yeah. Because I think I'm like looking at my purview, like how much space I have in my business. I'm like. I have twelve hundred and I can always use more. But I just was wondering what the reasoning was, but.
So they're kind of like a curtain wall that you can get, take it down and open it up to two units. So they're kind of like a curtain wall that you can get, take it down and open it up to two units.
Yeah, there'll be a structurally designed to accommodate tenant needs.
Love the architecture, by the way, too. I love that, you know, good use of materials, mix of different, you know, composition siding too. So kind of gives a little diversity architecturally to it as well. That's interesting. And because rather than just like, you know, it was a big square out there with, you know, like a windowless square, which it could be. You know, it looks it looks really interesting. It looks kind of almost like a chalet or something like that. So it's pretty close, especially when it's kind of nestled around the woods there. So.
Well, it's probably, it's pretty tucked in there. It's gonna be kind of probably challenging to see it from really unless you drive in there. So. Got any excess dirt? We know where to go with it.
They bring our sixteen thousand square foot building after one point five million. It's I'm humbled.
They might be happy with your dirt though.
A little bits.
All right, any other questions?
Comments?
I again, I think this is great usage. Great site for it. I mean, I think it's perfect. It settles it right in the industrial area that's already created. So excited to see it and can't wait to see it happen. So. With that, somebody want to make a motion for twenty twenty three dash eighty four? Which is approving the preliminary and building plan for thirty seven forty Chestnut.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash eighty four.
So a motion by council member Hatfield.
I'll second it.
Second by council member Wong. Again, that's twenty twenty three dash eighty four. That's a preliminary site building plan. And preliminary plot for thirty seven forty. Discussion. During that, all in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign. Carries. Then we have the second part of that and that is adopting ordinance. Ten thirty seven, make it PID what? PID eleven, because I don't have that on there. So again, is there someone willing to make a motion approving ordinance ten thirty seven?
I'll make a motion.
So a motion by council member Hubbard.
Second.
Second by council member Wong to adopt ordinance ten thirty seven. Creating zoning it to PID eleven. Discussion. During that, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move to item nine D sewer water access charge assistance policy.
Mayor, council member, as the highway forty one reconstruction is wrapping up. One of the things that staff has been looking at is continuing to look at ways that we can create programs. That help achieve having a vibrant downtown. And so one of the things that we've seen. And I think other communities have seen that can potentially be a barrier to getting different type of uses in downtown. Especially restaurants is sewer and water access charges. And so we've been doing some, I shouldn't say we, Julie has been doing some.
She's a busy girl.
Yeah, she is. She's been doing some investigation into. Or research into what other cities have been doing, especially in their, when they have more traditional downtowns like this. With sewer and water access charges and how they've sort of creatively worked to make it not so much of a barrier. And be able to help promote some of the the development that we want to see happen in the in the downtown area. So we have a number of different tools there in place. This would end up being just another tool to help out with that. But one that I think could be a pretty significant one, especially with restaurants. So I'll turn it over to Julie and she can go over this. You you might notice that guy sitting in the back right back there. He he's a business owner and supporter of this. So. So he might have a word to say too.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I won't repeat what Matt said. It's a lot of what I was gonna start with, but.
Sorry, Julie.
No, that's okay. I just wanted, you know, one of the challenges or one of the tasks. I have been assigned with is just trying to find ways to reduce barriers for existing businesses and to have new businesses come in. So out of the research I've been doing, one of the things I've found is one of the tools that other communities have used is offering assistance. For water and sewer connection fees, because these can be a significant barrier. So just for a little background, the Met Council's Environmental Service Division, I'm just gonna call them Met Council. They provide sanitary sewer treatment for wastewater generated by properties in the entire metro area. For that, they charge a one time, it's a sewer availability charge or a SAC charge. And it's based on SAC units that they determine for each property. And this is a one time charge. It's collected when the property is built or when it's determined. And it's determined based on the type of use, the size of the use and how much wastewater they are anticipated to use. And it goes towards towards maintaining the regional stormwater system that Met Council maintains. So when a business expands or a new business goes in that is determined to be more intense or would use more wastewater. They might have to pay an additional SAC fee. For example, if a retail space is converted into a restaurant, they're gonna have to pay more. So these fees are required to be paid when a building permit is issued. So right up front for a business. In addition to Met Council's charges, the city also charges sewer and water connection fees. That help maintain the city's sewer and water systems within this, within our boundaries. These are usually for long term maintenance, because most of our. Our system is already built, but for new, if there's new system or if there's new connections, it also boosts that. But any construction project or increase in intense use will require additional charges on top of Met Council SAC charges. So again, these these fees are based on the number of SAC units. As we look at downtown, all of the sewer and water is already installed. So most of the fees go go towards maintaining those systems. And like I said before, any business that's looking to expand has to pay our fees as well. So we know that these fees can create a big hurdle. And just recently, as Matt had mentioned, we've been working with the downtown business who wanted to expand. And they met council SAC fees were resulted in unexpectedly larger determination than we were expecting. And that's a large connection cost. And so if the fees aren't reduced, there's a chance that that expansion isn't gonna happen. And this isn't the first time that we have heard that this has happened. And there have been businesses that we have heard haven't moved into downtown because of the the large charges. So one of the visions, and how do I make this change? No, no. Sorry, technical difficulties. There we go. Got it. Okay, so one of the visions of the city council strategic plans is that in twenty twenty five, Chaska has a vibrant downtown. And as we move past the road construction, in addition to supporting our existing businesses. Finding ways to support the new and emerging businesses as they locate and expand within downtown is going to be key to meeting that vision. With the help, to help with this, we are proposing the creation of a new policy, which has been attached to your report. And as Matt mentioned, it would be a new tool in kind of the the business resources toolbox that Chaska already offers. The policy is aimed at businesses wanting to expand and open just in downtown Chaska. The eligible locations are shown on the map on the slide. It would be between Pine and Walnut Street on the east and west. And then between highway sixty one and the river for the north and south. And so what are the options that we are proposing? As this slide shows, we're proposing three different options and they could be, it could serve as a menu of items to choose from for a business. They could choose one of these items. They could choose all three of these items. We can figure out how it works best together. So the first one is that we are proposing is to become a participant of Met Council's sector for a program. You have to actually be a participating city to actually partake in this program. It allows for a small business and that would be those that have twenty five SAC units or less. To pay their SAC fees over time instead of upfront. It would be kind of set up as a loan. Businesses that are eligible can spread out eighty percent of the charges over up to ten years at a pretty low interest rate. That's determined by Met Council. Twenty percent would have to be paid upfront. We are currently working with the Met Council to become a participant of this program and it will require that we adopt an agreement with them. And so we will be bringing that to council for consideration in a near future.
You, could you maybe, it says small businesses with twenty five SAC units. What what does that mean in English?
So a restaurant, for example, has to be seventy five thousand square feet approximately to have twenty five SAC units. So if you look at La Hermosa, I think that one is thirty five hundred square feet. So they're pretty, it would be a pretty big restaurant. I think the biggest, I have it written down, the biggest buildings in downtown are are the office building. Off of. Just right between first and second on the west side, right next to Patrons. And then the church is the other biggest building and those are between twenty thousand and thirteen thousand square feet. Between twenty thousand and thirteen thousand square feet in size. So majority of the buildings would be less than twenty five.
So you said so twenty five is a seventy thousand square foot, sorry, seven, what was it? Would be roughly twenty five SAC units. Okay, and this is so SAC units driven by square footage.
But also the type of use.
And the type of use.
The heaviest, the heaviest example.
The heaviest users would be a restaurant, a salon, a brewery, bar, those kind of uses.
To use a lot of water.
Versus if someone said I'm opening like a, just a storefront that's selling clothing or something like that.
Probably a couple SAC units.
So for people listening and we're throwing acronyms again, SAC, and I don't know if we've already said it, but that's sewer access charges, right?
Sewer availability charge.
So just for anybody listening, so they understand what we're saying when we're talking these things. All right, sorry, but I just needed to understand.
Feel free, yep, pop in with any questions. So the next two on the slide are in relation to the city's sewer and water connection fees. So this is on top of the Met Council's. The the second option would be kind of designed similar to Met Council's deferral program. Where a business could assess a portion of the city's connection fee. So they were proposing that they can assess up to fifty percent of the city sewer and water connection fee over a ten year term. Which is similar to Met Council's. And this would be done through an assessment agreement that they would opt in. And then they would be billed on their property tax statement. And then the third option would be.
Quick about the outdoor patios though.
Yep, I will talk.
Okay, all right.
But with both of these options, I was gonna say that again, I'll say it now. So with with the assessment and the number three, the waiver that I'm gonna describe in a minute. We are recommending excluding outdoor patios as part of the charge. Met Council includes outdoor patios and there's nothing we can do with with that portion. But we're proposing to exclude that when we assess our connection.
That means if you have a patio or don't, it doesn't matter. We're not gonna, there's not gonna be more SAC units just because you have a patio.
What's the logic in saying you need more SAC units for a patio?
More usage of restrooms. Because you got more people.
The the opposite argument is is that people use the patio when they're not using the indoors and they use the indoors when they're not using the patio. And so that's that's been sort of the argument of why you would exclude patios is because they tend to be. You know, you you tend to use one when you're not using the other. When they're looking at, they're saying, oh, you're gonna use everything all at once. Well, it's Minnesota. And so nine months out of the year. Unless you're really, really warm blooded, you're not using that patio.
You know, if you're marketing your establishment differently, like I think about a Lord Fletcher's or something where the inside is very different from patio, you know.
Yep. But it's it's been one, if if you kept track of when Missy's Pizza was going into Carver, that was a big deal with theirs. Is that, you know, they wanted to have the patio outside. And the city passed something similar to this. If they wouldn't have, they probably wouldn't have gone forward.
So is, so with something like the supply, if someone said, hey, you know, I've got any existing property, but I want to add patio seating. Then they have to pay for additional SAC units under the current regulations.
They would have to pay the Met Council SAC units.
Yeah.
Our proposal, they wouldn't have to pay the city's.
Right. Yep. So but in terms of if they added today, then it's like, well, sorry, you want a patio, you're gonna have to like pay this additional SAC units. Right, okay.
This is well timed with our procedure.
Yep, very much so.
We've created with the downtown street reconstruction process, project, we've created spaces for people to have outdoor dining. And so for us to try to encourage that would be good.
The third option or third menu item, if you will, is that eligible. It's late, sorry. An eligible business would be able to apply for up to fifty percent of the city's fees to be waived. Completely. The amount of the fee waiver would be based on the total amount of construction costs for improvements to the building. So for example, if a building was renovating the inside, you know, doing an expansion. If they spent ten thousand renovations, then ten thousand can be reduced in fees up to fifty percent of the fee.
These would have to be permanent improvements in the building. So it couldn't be like they're buying equipment, because equipment's movable. This is stuff, you know, again, it's trying to incent people to reinvest back into the actual structure itself and not, you know. So that's why we tried to sort of the permanent features of the building.
And since downtown Chaska is fully built out, the fees are used mainly for maintenance. So there's, there won't be an upfront cost to the city to make any connections. So. Here, this slide is kind of just showing you an example of how these can be used, just to visualize how it can be used. The top one, it was looking at Met Council's SAC deferment. So one SAC unit is approximately twenty four hundred dollars, just.
Approximately what?
Twenty four hundred dollars. So for the top one, we're looking at an example of a business, they were determined to have seven SAC units. So their total amount due would be seventeen thousand approximately dollars. If they join the Met Council SAC deferment, they'd pay twenty percent or three, thirty five hundred upfront. And then they would have a monthly payment for ten years of approximately two hundred dollars. There would be interest associated with that. So there is a little bit higher fee in the end, but they're they're lower monthly payments if a business doesn't have that money upfront. And then with the city's sewer and water connection fees, very similar. The fees are a little bit higher than than Met Council's. As you can see, the sewer fee would be twenty seven hundred up, twenty seven thousand upfront. The water fee would be thirty three thousand upfront. So if they had the waiver, if they did thirty thousand dollars in improvements. They could waive that from that fee and then have the other half assessed and pay that with a yearly assessment. Or semi annual assessment. So basically, we'll allow business to decrease their upfront costs and then spread that remaining fee over a period of time. And we would work closely with any interested business and and kind of design a program that meets their needs. If they maybe wanted to assess less than fifty percent because they had some upfront capital that they could use or just didn't. It didn't work for their cash flow, we can work with them to do that. We will also be opening, open to figuring out what works best and how, like what menu items we could work with them on. And we would also monitor the effectiveness of the program and come back with any amendments if we think some are warranted. I, staff is recommending approval of the policy guidelines that are attached. I would be happy to answer any more detailed questions if you have them. And I'm guessing Matt.
So when we talk about the assessment over ten years, is that also including interest as well?
That includes interest and for the city assessment, there's a fee of one point five percent.
So so administrative fee, which I see in there, plus interest, which I didn't see the interest on there.
It's three point two, but.
And that's just example we took.
Sure.
Determined yearly by the city and the council. Determined yearly by the city and the council.
I was, yeah, I don't really have any questions. I just think it's exciting. Thank you for tying it directly to the strategic plan. I think that's nice. And it's especially exciting when there's something so obviously connected to the strategic plan. Um, and it's exciting for the businesses. It was interesting to hear staff kind of gave a preview of this to the Downtown Business Alliance um on Friday morning last week. And it was ju- it was interesting to hear their perspective and even um, you know, Steve Ritz with Fitness First talking about adding a shower and that, you know, increased seconds, you don't think of something that small of having an impact um when you're trying to put a new business in. So I think this is is really exciting um just to continue to see how supportive we are of businesses and how how much we truly do desire to have that vibrant downtown. Um, so I I thank you staff for all your work on this. I know that you guys um put a lot of thought and effort in how we can um be really engaged with our downtown businesses, so that's amazing to see. I had a question, not necessarily specific to this, but kind of, do we have, and maybe Julie, this is something you're working on now that you're here, but um something we can give like prospective businesses that's as like, here are things that could help you, we want you downtown and like would include something like this. Does that exist? Is it gonna exist?
Well, it does when we have our conversation with them.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's a good point, yeah.
Okay, I was a small business and I wanted to do something, but I didn't know these things were here. I may just not because I didn't know that all these resources were here. So I I just don't think we can always expect they're gonna engage with us before giving up per se on doing something. So I think if there it was some availability of that, I think it would be nice where they didn't have to get so far in the process before they knew there were options for them.
Thank you for asking that question. I'm in fact working on kind of a packet of information that not only I can give out to businesses um as I visit businesses, but we can also put, I'm working with communications that we can put it on our website, we can email it out, we can put it on social media so that we can have that information available.
And like even thinking about like making sure Jen Angel is, and I know she is usually aware of things like this, so that if they're coming to Downtown Business Alliance, they know, oh, hey, we have this pack. I think that's amazing and perfect, so.
And also talking with brokers, you know, that work with the businesses, so they know what these are.
Yeah, and I think visiting like the Chamber as well as the Downtown Business Alliance, that those presentations are very helpful. Cause sometimes even as an existing business owner, you don't know everything that's kind of out there that, you know, if you're wanting to even rehab your business, you know, the availability of uh dollars that you can utilize, so.
I think things like this are like are utmost importance to, you know, a lot of the redevelopment work that we're doing, you know, we've been at the, was it the Downtown Master Plan Task Force was probably what, two thousand?
Twelve.
Twelve, so it's been like eleven years ago, right? And gosh, I remember like meeting up here eleven years ago, talking about a lot of this stuff and the structural, the brick and mortar side of it. But one of the things that didn't really get discussed were a lot of the the economic impediments or obstacles that prevented businesses coming down. There's one thing to say that, hey, you know, we can provide investment to go, you know, build new facilities, renovate the sidewalks and streets and pay for um, you know, like um str- streetscapes, right, or um provide financial assistance through loans for, you know, renovating the exterior buildings. But things like this are like showstoppers for business, right? So identifying, you know, economic impediments that are challenging businesses from coming into downtown are things like this that we need to look for and identify and see if we can, you know, build bridges across them. Because, you know, we've been, we've been trying to um really kind of try to change the landscape of our downtown to more of that retail landscape that we've been looking for, more shops, more um restaurants, uh more of a walkable um kind of a retail downtown. And in order to do that, there's, you know, a number of things like this that, you know, may be out there beyond this, that if we can find those things and, you know, kind of help um business owners or small businesses get across those, I could really change the landscape a lot in the way that we're looking to change it. So thank you for the work on this.
Yeah, I, so where my business is located, you know, it's a brick and mortar. One of my business neighbors a few years ago was putting a restaurant in and it kind of just stalled out. And I ran into him and I said, you know, how's it going? Like, is everything going okay? And he said that he was struggling because of the sack charges. And so firsthand, just seeing just the the barrier that it can create, it, I was really excited to see this on the agenda and be able to, you know, have us help give a hand up to some of these to free up some capital for for those small businesses, cause he was a local guy wanting to start, you know, a restaurant in town and um it it really benefits and it helps create that and allow for those business owners to come in and and kind of be successful. And that's really the end goal. So I applaud this as well. This is very exciting to see.
So what happens if, say, somebody takes this on and they don't make it? Wha- what happens then?
The Met Council's deferment program, we would notify Met Council and then we would get credit or that property would get credit for the number of units that was already paid for. And then next business to come would have to pay the remaining.
And so you might have one business that needs ten and maybe they've paid enough to pay off seven. You get credit for those seven, so if the next business coming in needs less than that, there's already credits on the building. If they need more, then they just pay that difference and more, more.
So the cred- the credits.
The credits stay with the building.
So would they, would the new tenant be able to spread those three across another ten years? Or just be continuation of whatever the term was?
That's a good question. I'll have to look into that. I would think they would be able to spread it out because they're a new business and it would be a new agreement.
Yeah, we we definitely have more flexibility on our side, so we can continue to do that. I I would suspect that the Met Council would, you know, view a new business coming in similarly.
Yeah, I asked mainly because like we know that also the the businesses that have high turnover tend to be restaurants, right? Restaurants are one of the toughest businesses, cause you know, low margin, high turnover. Um, so, you know, it's one of those cases, right? I wouldn't be at all surprised if we had a restaurant come in, you know, lasted for a few years, paid off some of the sack charges, but then now there's this remainder left over, how does that balance out? But, you know, the beneficiaries further down the road, if like another restaurant takes that space over and then continues there for a while, you know, two or three restaurants down the road, ten years later, then it's like, guess what? No sack charges because they're already paid for by the restaurants who were there before, right?
It's a big deal that they stay with the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So so that's a really good thing, they stay with the building, because that means like a space that has been a restaurant before has a greater likelihood to stay as a restaurant, cause someone who's coming in and say, hey, you know what? I can open, I don't have to pay any sack charges, I save you like a thirty grand up today's dollars, right? You know, who knows what's gonna be in the future. So that's gonna be a good thing.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Is it, is this program, you know, it kind of sounds like it's been out there for a while, but we probably, we weren't aware of it, or is that?
The Met Council's program was adapted in twenty thirteen, so the, I will say in my research, there's a two handfuls maybe of cities that partake in it.
Oh.
Um, so it isn't every city that partakes in it. Either they don't know about or they haven't adopted.
I don't know that they're advertising.
I was gonna say, they probably don't want to advertise it.
Probably not.
Um, yeah, cause there, I, it honestly was the first time I had heard of it.
I mean, thi- thi- this is um it it's very, it seems very unique uh in in what it does and and you know, we've talked about that. We we had a business that wanted to come here and they they start and they start hearing the sack charges and they just like, whoa. And and uh, I think it's scary.
Mm hmm.
And cause it's something that they don't think about. They they just assume that that's there. They don't know that you have to go through that. And uh to have, to have, to be able to help places out like this, this will, this will be um very helpful i- i- in getting some of that redevelopment that we want going on. And and is this, I I'm kind of looking out big picture now, if others find out that this is happening, is this the Met Council keep it to the twenty five, twenty five hundred sack? That's a, that's a Met Council thing. So we have no way to go past that.
To go to make it bigger for our.
And it's.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Not for the Met Council's deferment, we can consider talking about it for the city's portion at some point.
Yeah, a- and we have to be cognizant too, though, that in like new development, there is improvements we have to make.
Right.
It's a little bit different in this area because a lot of those improvements exist, so we don't have all those charges that we typically would have with that. Um, so that's why I think you see most cities who implement this are doing it in existing areas, trying to get existing buildings sort of refilled.
So that's.
I, you know, just before you go, I I think that's really our goal is that people understand that this is designed for that. We can't go out and do it in the commons and other places like that. It's really designed for for here, the downtown area.
So and that's kind of part of my question, right? So like the the city portion is definitely specifically designed for the the downtown historic district. The Met Council deferment, is that applicable to like other?
It could be used for other areas as well.
So Chaska Commons could use the Met Council deferment.
Vlogs are under twenty five.
Vlogs are under twenty five. Also, most of those places are not going to be under twenty five.
Yeah. Hmm, yeah. Seventy five hundred feet isn't a huge restaurant, so, yeah.
Mm hmm.
Like, uh, did I, I think I heard that the bakery right over here bought a building on Second Street as have they been notified? I mean, I don't know, I, that's what I heard. I don't know if it's true.
I don't know if they have or not, yeah.
I I think that I think referring to a deferment bakery, I don't think they've done any improvements to make it a bakery at this point in time from what I'm aware of, but when they.
They haven't moved yet, right?
No, they have not. They are still operating across the street here.
Andy, what do you think about this?
Yeah, come up.
You gotta come up, though.
Andy, you're an operator of Red Bench Bakery. Uh, I think this is a great opportunity. Um, we had stated earlier, one of you had stated about having it more accessible to come to the, to have people come down here and open up businesses. Uh, if I were to take the bakery itself, it would have saved me four hundred thousand right off the bat if I would have just built a brand new building. So when you take it and you come down, you want to rehab a historical location, it's gonna cost that money. It's gonna cost that little extra. So anywhere you can sort of save in between to have that, help that renovation and sort of beautify and bring back the historical downtown area, I think that'd be phenomenal. So. And we really could use restaurants down here.
What's that?
We could really could use more restaurants down here, too. So I really love to see, uh, I don't want to say I had a dream speech, but I had a dream one time that I walked outside and it's already coming to fruition, the road's being redone, everything's being done, but I had a dream that there was like people walking around in droves and just restaurants everywhere and people outside on patios and stuff, so.
It's uh, that would be awesome. That would be awesome.
So.
So so you feel that this is a pretty beneficial.
Uh, significant. I think when I've talked to people in the past about trying to get businesses down here, there's been hesitations about that kind of stuff, about uh what does it offer? What does the, why would I want to move out to the suburbs? And if this gives them that little extra incentive, say like a revival or maybe a notable restaurant in Minneapolis says, oh, we'll do a second location in the suburbs. Maybe the Chask is the place to go. I think it is. Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right.
Approve the program guidelines for sewer and water access charge assistance policy.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
A second.
Second by Councilmember Wong and this is uh except, are we accepting? What are we doing? Recommendation? Uh, approve the program guidelines. Thank you, what you said. Program guidelines for sewer and water access charge assistance policy. Right, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post him sign. Aries. All right, that looks like the last of our action items. All right, uh, we move into bills. Thank you, everyone here for those events.
I got two questions.
Okay.
Um, so pages four and five, there's an item for Carver County Public Works. Um, it's showing something.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Andy. Um, showing an item for a sign for butter, butternut autobahn. And the last I recall, there was like two um Jonathan.
It's actually not a sign, it's signal.
Well.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's when uh, that's when the road work was redone up there. There was some work that had to be done to signal. We have to take care of our livelihood.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Oh, yeah. Cause it said sign, didn't it?
It does, that's what I was asking.
Cut off.
It's.
It's just like.
Oh. Yeah, so thank you to our system to, it's like.
Cause I saw that and I just assumed, oh, okay, we're using the county to help us make our stuff.
No, no, it's 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 that portion of that work that was done up there with.
So when you added the turn lane and stuff like that.
Yep.
Yeah, because I was looking at thinking, well, Jonathan just built two brand new ones there. Why are we?
Oh, that's right, that's not a perk.
Yeah, so it's just, yeah, that's, so, yeah, one of those things.
Signal.
I wish they would fix, I wish.
Yeah, I wish, isn't there any way to fix that?
It's just how our system's set up.
Gosh.
Yeah.
Start a new tab.
You want to eliminate so many questions.
Yeah, so many questions around, that's stuff like that.
Want to move some of the columns a little tighter.
Yep, exactly.
A little smidge, yep. Okay, page thirteen, um, there's an item for Heartline Business Systems, there's just three items that all say data center network ref, right? But they're all different places.
Yeah, so uh Wade, our IT director, uh, he said those uh the items in question uh are all network switches and routers with network cabling accessory with three years of smart net Cisco support. Uh, they don't bill us till they ship the items, uh, so they end up giving us a few invoices at once.
Oh, gotcha.
But it's it's basically for equipment for the data center.
For.
For our data center, yep.
Right, which is, yeah, like the one we have here, yeah.
But in City Hall.
Building, yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, got it. Okay, cool. That's the only questions I have. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Motion pay the bills. Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to pay the bills, uh, discussion. Hearing none, Elise.
That's where we're happy on.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes, all right, moves us to other business, uh, Councilmember Hatfield.
All right, um, a few things. First, and I I won't, I'll just mention it quickly, cause I know Councilmember Hubbard and Mayor, you were there as well, but um just a thank you to Representative Lee and the House Capital Investment Committee for coming down to Cheska last week to uh tour um for potential, the twenty twenty four bonding bill to see Cities for West. So that was earlier in the meeting, we thanked um Ms. Coleman for that and that for the, what we'd already gotten. And now we had the House Capital Investment Committee come out um for a second, or that would be their first time, right?
Second.
Oh, so that was their second time?
So, there might be some members.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Their second.
Yeah, so that's exciting. Um, and you know, I think staff did a great job with it, um, the mayor. Um, so hopefully we'll get into that bonding bill. Um, but it was um Downtown Business Alliance had uh their secretary and um their treasurer attend as well, and that was awesome. So it was a nice brisk morning, but it was kind of fun to hear kind of what they were talking about.
Great turnout.
It was a great turnout, yeah. And lots of staff, so thank you to staff too, um, that I think just again, with the vibrant downtown, uh, all of us showing up and um just kind of showing how important that area is to us, so thank you there. Um, and then on kind of same topic downtown, some exciting events coming up. So there are trick or treating event on October twenty eighth from two to five. Um, that's coming up. It's always nice. It's like one of my favorites. Probably my favorite is just seeing everyone walk around, kind of like Andy talked about. It's a day where when you go down the last couple of years, every, there's lots of people out, there's kids out walking and they're walking from business to business. They're kind of getting to see what's down there. Um, you know, and maybe they aren't shopping in that moment, but they're gonna remember that Linda Seller had flannels for sale, or they saw something cute and shop five oh one and they're gonna go back for it. So it's kind of a nice way just to get downtown. This year is really exciting, cause the road's gonna be mostly, it should be mostly done by then, so they get a preview um of that. And then that leads into the next event, which is their Dear Weekend event, um, November third through the fifth. So um So, um, the. So we had a kind of an exciting update with this at the Downtown Business Alliance meeting, um, from the project that forty one should be open at least to Fourth Street. Um, by that weekend, November fourth, the morning of November fourth, right? Um, so that'll be really exciting. So truly, if you come down for deer weekend, you'll get to walk around and see the new road and see it open at least through fourth, hopefully always sixty one, but.
All the way open that morning. If it only gets up to Fourth Street, they're saying that it's only a few days behind that.
Yeah, so very exciting. And there'll be areas to walk and things like that. So it'll be, I like highly recommend that everybody gets down there and shows up too for the businesses that have really kind of suffered through this to have so many people come down and show up that weekend. And even the weekend before would be really, really cool. So just encouraging people to do that because a lot of the businesses have specials and, um, are of course open and it's a big weekend for them. So and then it'll just be exciting to have a road open.
One quick note on that, uh, parking restrictions go away, uh, for permanently uh, for the October twenty eighth event. Uh, so we'll be, except for on First Street until they open up, uh, forty one all the way, they need to still keep the parking restrictions there for turning of vehicles. Uh, but all the rest of them will go away on October twenty eighth.
And this weekend, there'll be food trucks as well, um, to kind of complement the restaurants we already have downtown. So you'll be able to come eat at restaurants, but there'll also be food trucks with some other different things, um, as well. And then on our consent agenda item um, today, we had, uh, for event, though you'll be able to get some drinks. Adult beverages. And walk around a little even, which is kind of fun. So.
New Orleans style.
Yeah, new road, go to the businesses, grab a beer. It's going to be fun. So um, I'm really excited about that weekend for sure, uh, and there'll be lots to do. So lots. And then hometown holidays just a month after. So you can come downtown a lot and there's going to be a cool new road and it's going to be so pretty. So just very exciting. Um, I'm pretty sure people are sick of me because I talk to people that are not even from Chaska about this all the time. So I work, you know, with people all over the country and they're like, I did not care about your road opening. And I'm like, I care a lot about that road opening. So um, that will be amazing.
Is there, before you get off of there, is there, is there some sort of an event plan?
Haven't set the event because there, because of the uncertainty of exactly when it's going to. I mean, uh, I think this event, the deer, uh, weekend was meant to be sort of the thing that just sort of kicks it off, but you know, it's possible that it's only open till four, so it's been hard to nail down exactly you know, when it'll be done. I, I mean, there's going to be work that is done on the Paseos and the tunnel next year. I think it might be a good idea to maybe sometime when that stuff is done next summer, maybe give recognition for it. It's up to you guys, but it's.
Yeah, I mean, this kind of feels like a soft grand opening because there's going to be, I forgot to mention, there'll be music as well. Some music, food trucks, the businesses. So it feels kind of like a soft grand opening, but I can go like a big downtown grand reopening would be fun to do next year. I like good party anytime.
Well, I just, I don't know. I guess I was thinking that we were going to do something.
What do you all want to, you want to take a photo?
I don't know. I just know that I had heard that something's being worked on, but.
Well, that's what it is, is that deer. That, that's what's being worked on is just to try to get people downtown. You know, the thing is, is what Mindot's told us is, you know, they might open it up on Friday night. They might open it up on Saturday morning.
Well, I think, I think it's real encouraging because they're pouring curbs.
Yes.
Once they pour curbs, they're already, they're, they've already, uh, ground the part of forty one. So they're gonna, they're gonna put the final lift on. So all of this is in process and we're still a couple of weeks ahead here.
I can tell you that Bob from Bolton Mank, um, who comes to the Downtown Business Alliance meetings, what's his technical title, construction manager? That's it. Um, is very careful to make, to even state things, not even make promises, but to even say things. And he was willing to say that in that meeting, which is pretty huge. So maybe I'll just go hang out at like four. If you see me at four AM on Highway forty one. It's because I'm.
If I see you there, there's something wrong with me.
So I think in addition to, you know, Councilor Hatfield's excitement about this, I think she had also kind of alludes to a point which I think is really, you know, probably well taken, which is that, you know, part of the reason why we've been pushing this to get businesses down and traffic to come back through town. And like, and we talk about like having a celebration. If we, if we postpone a ribbon cutting or something like that to the spring, then we sort of miss the excitement about the fact that actually is open because it's like, great, we've been driving it for six months or three months and it's been open. But here's the thing, if we have some sort of a celebration or at least some sort of ceremonial thing, get it in the paper, then that generates some publicity that others outside may see, oh, I saw there's a ribbon cutting or some ceremony or something about that that others can publicize and use to say, hey, we're open. And you know, of course invite, you know, downtown businesses is up to celebrate with us too, because I think that's like really important to, you know, kind of mark a a place and time to say, hey, we're open for business and we're still here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the big question would be is when. Uh, because there's just, it's, it's just there's still a lot of work to do on the, on the sides and, and.
But I think, I think.
I don't know that people are going to take it so well that we're sort of putting that stake down when they still see a lot of work going on. That, that's my fear.
I understand where you're coming from.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. No, it's okay. I was just going to say, I think it's nice to have the event that, like you said, like a soft opening, but I also agree with you and maybe it's the celebration of like the Paseos, you know, and that like you said, everything being kind of tidied up, that something can be.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean.
Put around something like that. Cause I think the businesses can benefit from multiple celebrations. And I think too, with, you know, the holidays coming up, you know, I mean, obviously the drive for people to come down and shop for, for the holidays, but I also think there might be, maybe there's like a lull next year that that could be a beneficial draw for people to come down specifically for that reason.
Yeah, I think that's very true. And it's, um, the, I think the best thing we can do for our businesses downtown, especially like even with the road being open, even with some pieces not being done, is just to come downtown that weekend. That's the biggest weekend for a lot of those businesses. And I know the restaurants could really use it and things like that. So I think that's going to be just come down as the biggest celebration the businesses could have. They would love that.
Yeah.
But I agree that this having another thing is another time to bring people down.
See, and I, I, I kind of agree with Mike about you, you gotta do the ribbon cutting of forty one. Now, you can't do it next year.
Well, yeah, there's maybe you cut for the road this year and you cut for the sales next year.
And that's fine, but somehow we got to work in a ribbon cutting for the road opening, I think. I, I just, otherwise then don't do it. And I, I, I get the uncertainty, but somehow we have to figure out a way that, that there has to truly be that for me. As hard as we've and as much as we've had to deal with on this project, I, I certainly think that it is worth a, a ribbon cutting prior, even if it's the Fourth Street. I get it. I, I, I know what you're saying. But if we don't do it now, then don't do it. There, there's no point of it. I mean, again, that's my thinking and it certainly can be discussed, uh, you know, I, I don't know how and, and that's something we just gotta keep watching as it gets closer and closer to that, that timeline.
It's only a couple of weeks out.
I know.
Yeah.
I know.
But doesn't have anything really fancy, but just to get the word out there, just to put a stake in the ground that this is open and we can just, you know, help to make, get that word out, right?
Yeah, we can talk about staff.
So we gotta be there at five in the morning?
You gotta be there at the forty six.
I'll get the forty six.
Just gotta be the first one down. Iconic.
Kevin's, Kevin's going to be riding. We cut, we cut you off.
Well, that was, I mean, that was a lot of excitement. That's pretty much all it. Um, and then I was gonna, uh, mention the public safety uh, facility open house on October twenty fifth from six to eight, uh, at the community center. Um, and I just think with so much chatter online and things, it'll be nice for people to come down and A, see how exciting that is going to be for our community. And B, just get some factual information right from us as sources. So that'll be really nice. So thank you to staff for putting that on. So that's the twenty fifth um, from six to eight at the community center in the Brick City banquet room. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, so past events, the, I was able to attend the Chaska Cares concert at Athletic Park. So it seemed like, you know, for the, it was, wasn't quite as much of a turnout as I was hoping, but you know, I mean, the acts were phenomenal. I mean, you know, just I sat, like, sat around, listened to some of the music for a bit and I was really, really impressed with the quality of the acts and um, it was just like a great atmosphere. And you see, it seems like everyone who was there had a great time. So I'm really optimistic that, you know, next year that, you know, if we, you know, do an event similar to that that, uh, the Rotary Response or something like that, that, you know, it would be, you know, even, you know, a better turnout than this year and, um, you know.
The good thing is, is that the, the Rotary did have somebody sort of underwrite to make sure that uh, make sure that there was no loss on the, on that. Um, but they did it saying, hey, we know the first year of these events are really tough. We want to see you go out and try to do it again.
Cool.
And so, you know, learn from the, the things that, you know, we can learn from and get that thing established, so.
Very cool. Like I said, it seemed like everyone was there and I was there in the, earlier in the day when it opened and later at night and it was, you know, people seem to have a really good time. So I think, you know, when people have a great time there, I think that's always positive. Um, so there's that and, um, the other, the other item is that the, uh, that the Pioneer Trail Bavaria Road Roundabout will be closed on Thursday, October nineteenth for some resurfacing work. And October thirty first, Highway forty one down by where the Renaissance Festival is, is going to be closed for a day and a half down there. Because they're doing some work on that railroad crossing. So, um, if you're going down that direction, it'll, forty one will be closed, but not because of us.
When is it? When are they doing that?
They're October thirty first and November first, half the day.
Yeah, for a day and a half. Yep, they're doing.
We could be open by then.
We'll be close, but we won't be open yet.
Number four.
Yep, so they'll be doing some resurfacing or doing some work on the railroad crossing down there. And then, um, and then congratulations to Hazelton for hosting the KPMG Women's PGA Championship in twenty twenty six. So in addition to the US Amateur at the Town Course next year, so recall. And then the Ryder Cup in Hazelton in twenty twenty nine. So that's, you know, quite a few tournaments coming to town. So it's, uh, feeling like this second half of the decade is going to be pretty packed with tournaments in town.
Yeah.
So really, really exciting. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I guess I don't have much to say other than thank you. Yeah, I was at the, um, bonding tour, uh, the house bonding tour and just thank you to Representative Ream um, for putting that on the calendar and advocating so hard for it. Um, so, uh, I don't know if Councilmember Hatfield mentioned it, but after the downtown trick and treat, this weekend or the weekend of October twenty eighth, you can go up to the community center, did you, and do the Halloween jamboree host at the, the community center from four to six. Um, it's always kind of a fun event. The Boy Scouts have a little haunted house. It's like a dollar. I think my son went through like fifteen times last year. Uh, it's just really a sweet event and they have a little DJ that's in the theater and some arts and crafts. And I think there's some snacks and it's just such a fun, sweet little event up there. So and get to wear their costumes. You could see all the kids in their costumes. So fun. So anyways, uh, that would be the only thing I have to mention. Otherwise, everything else has been said. So.
All right, thank you. Kristoff. Anybody over there? How about you? She said coffee with a cop on Wednesday. Where, where? Caribou North. Up by cup. Nine to ten. There's always a nice little crowd there that shows up for those, so. Try to make it if you can. Matt, anything? All right, I got a few things. Uh, first off, uh, I'd just like to say thanks to, uh, Pro Tem Wong for covering last week by Ozonataown, so I appreciate that. I got a really stupid question, but why is there a frame on the ceiling?
So.
He's going to go.
Yeah, that is going to be an access panel into the roof area where we're seeing another leak through the, uh, through the roof onto the finance area over there. So they're.
Kind of frame it up.
Access through there so that they can get in and try to do some more.
Pretty little person's got to crawl through that.
We got one small guy in our maintenance crew.
It's still a giant leap for roof maintenance.
Well, then it wasn't a dumb question.
You can applause for that one.
Wow.
I, I just, uh, I know that we have people that, that, uh, retire and move on and different jobs, but I, I just want to really kind of recognize, uh, one of our employees that just recently retired, Jack Worm, uh, spent forty five years and what, four months or something like that, uh, working here in our electrical department. Uh, Jack has been um, unbelievable and the things that he's done over the years, uh, the things that he's, uh, helped and I, I really worry about the knowledge that's leaving with him, you know, because he knows so much about our electrical system, uh, being here. And, you know, it's, I, I look back and, and I've said it before that I worked for the city and uh, when I worked here thirty five years ago or whatever it was, you know, Jack was just starting. So it was interesting to see him come in at the, at his career and now I get to see him go out at the top of his career. So I just want to recognize Jack. I, I don't, I don't think you'll see forty five year employees anymore. I just don't, I think that's something of the past as this era moves on, but I, I think that's, that's an amazing accomplishment. And he's in a pretty dangerous line of work, so, um, congratulations to Jack, uh, his retirement is well deserved. And I know he's working for us part time a little bit to help us uh, get through and to help the transition for the new, um, what was his actual, I know he was, I don't know his actual title, but.
Yeah, it was like general foreman.
And now that is being held by.
Mike England.
So Mike England, uh, which is one of our linemen is replacing Jack. So Jack will be helping there and but Jack in his, the last year and a half or whatever, uh, has been making a how to book about our substations. Um, if this happens, do this, if this happens, do that. And, uh, um, so it's, it's good to see him to be able to do that and, and for our folks now to have something. I mean, one of the things we base everything on is our reliability and reliability is because the people know the systems. And, and it's, so I think it's great to, and again, congratulations, Jack, so. Um, you already talked about the Gulf, uh, forty one, I, we kind of mentioned a little bit here, but it's exciting to see the curb and these things happening. I, I always say, once the curbs go in, uh, the blacktop follows soon. So, uh, that's a good thing. And that hopefully can open up things, open up more businesses that are temporarily, uh, can't get in at this point. So um, good to see. Uh, tomorrow, uh, Tuesday, there's a ribby ribbon cutting for is it Imrus?
Imrus.
Imrus. So, uh, that's happening. I'm not even sure of the time. I hope I said my phone.
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, uh, so um, be interesting. Hopefully we'll get a little tour and see what's, what's happening there, so. Uh, the bonding tour, we, I know we talked about it, but I want to say thank you to staff. I know a lot of them did a lot of things to get things ready. They were there. They manned stations, uh, uh, on our walkthrough. So, uh, thank you to everyone. Uh, Nate did an awesome job. Went around explaining the project, um, Matt as well, leading up to it. So, um, thanks to everyone, uh, it's, I think, um, Senator Coleman mentioned it that, you know, once they've given us the money, they don't want to see that just disappear. That, so it's good, it looks good that hopefully we can get the remaining. What are we looking for, nineteen?
Nineteen.
So it'll be, uh, hopefully, um, that can happen and then we can start that uh, project and cause more chaos downtown. But, uh, good chaos, good chaos. So thank you. But, uh, good chaos, good chaos. So, thank you to everyone for that, uh, appreciate it. Uh, you already talked about the railroad crossing in Scott County. Uh, one thing of note also, um, Steve Curtis is now the new Southwest Metro Chamber President. Um, I talked to him a little bit, um, and just said, you know, I just don't feel you're very strong in Chaska, and that's really why the downtown business was developed. And he said, I'm going to change that, so I'm hoping, and I'm going to call him out on it if he doesn't. But, uh, Steve's a, seems like a really, really nice guy.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's exciting to see, I, I mean, he told me at the Chaska High School Homecoming Parade that, he said he's, Friday was his last day of work, and he's starting Monday at the chamber, so, uh, we'll see how that works out. So, uh, congratulations to Steve and good luck in his new, uh, endeavor, so. Um, I think, uh, council meetings, are, we're having a work session the thirtieth?
Yeah, it's possible, we may not have a council meeting, but we're definitely a work session.
So, so for us, and we're back, I think we're back on track again, November second, November twentieth, council meeting, so, um, we should be good to go. All right, we have a short EDA meeting following this, um, so I'll put out last call, if not, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
Right, we're going to turn around, and we are going to be.
Spin around in our.
Going to be EDA guys. All right, so we'll call the, uh, Monday, October sixteen, twenty twenty three, EDA meeting to order, Elise, we call roll.
Commissioner Hatfield, here, Commissioner Hubbard.
Here.
Commissioner Wong.
Here.
Commissioner Grau.
Uh, here. And like I said earlier, uh, Commissioner Grau is gone and will not be joining us, so. All right, uh, we move to item four, or item three, adopting the agenda, um, is there corrections or additions? If not, add entertaining motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wong to adopt the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Carrie moves us to item four, proving previous meeting minutes.
Let's see any.
There weren't any in there, so. We'll skip that, and then, uh, item five is our discussion item, uh, proven amended and restated purchase and development agreement for the Ernst House Chaski Arts.
Uh, President and Commissioners, this is, item is the same one that was on the council meeting, we also have to take action to EDA. It's basically just amending the dates, uh, that we have for them moving forward to closing the site, but then also to, uh, finish construction on the site.
They're ultimately just, they moved the closing date and the construction start is what's really happening.
Yeah.
And that's because of.
They've been having a difficult time sort of getting their contractor lined up, so.
Well, you must have somebody, didn't they say, didn't you say they were coming in and talk to us?
Well, they're coming in to talk to building inspections tomorrow, yeah.
All right, so we don't need a whole full fledged presentation, you guys want a presentation?
Don't we?
All of you, anybody that's listening.
God, yes.
Anybody that's listening.
Loves you.
All right, so we, all right, so it's basically the same thing we approved under consent in, in the agenda, is just that they've changed the, uh, start date and the closing date, so. Hopefully it's happening, though. We're still there, so. All right, with that, I would need, uh, a motion to approve amended.
Motion to approve, um, I'm sorry.
Nope. Uh, so I have a, a Commissioner Hatfield, motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wong to approve amended and restated purchase and redevelopment agreement with the Ernst, Ernst House Chaski Arts. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Other business, anyone? Anyone? Ferris? All right, uh, then the last thing is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. You wait, have a good night, thanks for joining us.